So I'm going to call to order this special meeting of the Santa Barbara City College Board of Trustees. And note, for the record, that everyone is in attendance except for Veronica, who I think is probably on Peter. Who's in China. Everyone, no, we thought you were Veronica. So we can all stand to, for those who wish to participate, say a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, this is our time for public comment on those items that are not on the agenda, that I don't.
Actually, this one is in the arm. It's a special meeting.
So there would be none, even though it says here, okay.
No, yes. No, not, yeah, no.
Okay.
Yes, no.
That's not what it says, then.
Okay.
That's a threat warning.
Well, even though we're not doing that, I'm going to make an announcement about public comments in general. Um, I just want to state that once public comment has concluded, the rules do not allow additional comments from the public. At a recent meeting, there, a member passed a note to the board during the meeting. So prohibition about commenting after public comments extends to passing notes to board members during the meeting. This event led me to confirm with legal counsel that the rules prohibit passing notes to board members during the meeting. If despite this prohibition, a note is passed to a board member, the rules also require that the note be shared with all board members. And with that, we move to item four point one, supplemental employment retirement program. And, um, I'm sure you're going to present.
You have a public comment on the item?
There is public, thank you. We have three comments.
Good, you put them up there.
Thank you. Thank you for all your help.
We're all here for you.
Okay, we start with Cornelia Alzheimer.
All right. So honorable members of the Board of Trustees, President Miller, Dr. Benjamin. Um, so let me start out with my appreciation for all of you, the time and work you put into your service. And I want to thank you for that. And we have a special meeting today. And in front of you, you have a proposal and a resolution about a retirement incentive plan, also known as SERP. I am not here today to discuss if this is a good idea or not. I have been only informed about this plan shortly before noon yesterday and then saw the material last night. I have not had time to analyze and understand this proposal. And most importantly, I have not been able to discuss this with my group, the Faculty Association. But there are a few things that I do know, and these I would like to share with you. One, this is a proposal of great magnitude, not only fiscally, but in terms of impact on the college. Number two, there are significant concerns about having a SERP so soon after we had another one, or previous one, I believe it's four years ago. There was literally no communication whatsoever with any one of our, when on campus outside of President's Cabinet until yesterday. Number four, this total lack of communication, I believe is a serious problem. Number five, in case anyone is unaware, I'm sure you are aware, but I wanted to repeat this. Any retirement incentive is a mandatory item of collective bargaining. That means a SERP has to be negotiated with the CSEA, the ALA, and the Faculty Association. And this clearly has not happened yet. All things considered, I believe that any vote today would be premature. And I would urge you to please discuss the proposal, but also hear and listen to any concerns you might, in addition to my comment here today, and vote another day. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patricia Stark.
Hello, I'm gonna read, so as Cornelia pointed out, not much time to put together thoughts. So less than a week ago, I stood before you and tried to describe in my academic senate president's presentation, the multiple ways that faculty members are involved in shared decision making at Santa Barbara City College. I did this because it's important in the Wild West, that is now Santa Barbara City College these days, that I make a clear statement to you, to the administration, and to our faculty, that we are not being winnowed out of the leadership of Santa Barbara City College, that our faculty voices are still heard and valued. Well, don't I feel like a dupe? Um, I wish, Cornelia stated, I don't need to restate it again, the quickness by which this was communicated, the lack of shared governance, I wish I could intelligently and confidently tell you how the faculty feels about this SERP, which was announced yesterday afternoon via an email by Dr. Benjamin, and Cornelia and I were notified with a phone call in the middle of the day. But I can't do that. Other than a half dozen panicked phone calls last night, I really have no way of knowing how our faculty feels. This is despite the fact that the ten plus one areas under the academic senate purview include processes for institutional planning and budget development. I do know that our senate's Planning and Resources Committee and its chair, Katie Laris, is here today, last week discussed the SERP. And this is the senate group, this is our committee that is most knowledgeable about college resources and its finances. They discussed the SERP at length and they informally rejected it. Here is a summary of their discussion that was sent to me via email. SERP needs to be resisted by the faculty. The last SERP didn't appear to save the college much money, and we are still dealing with the problems from the great turnover in our top echelons of management and administration. Those faculty pushing for SERP are doing so out of self-interest and not because it would actually help the college. So let me make a couple of things clear. I actually am speaking for myself today and not as the academic senate president, because I can't. Um, but I am someone who's been a daily witness to the disruption the last SERP wrought on this campus. I am also today arguing against my own personal self-interest, because I could take advantage of this SERP. I'm of an age, I have the right number of, um, I have the right number of years, and I'm almost ready for, in terms of retirement income. And in many ways, that would be a blessed relief. But I'm the only full-time faculty member in my department, and if I leave, who replaces me? Who will be department chair? Who will hire the adjuncts needed to replace me and teach our classes? Who will compile the schedule of classes? Who will conduct faculty evaluations? Who will update curriculum? And who goes to the academic senate next year to fight for a full-time replacement? To secure the future of what is one of the most decorated journalism programs in the state? And I'm choosing not to discuss today the loss in faculty leadership, should I choose to walk away. So here are some things I'm asking you to consider today. The financial benefit of the SERP is literally built on destabilizing the instructional departments and student services, student support services at this college. We will be losing experienced faculty college-wide, and the SERP's financial benefit depends on those faculty members either being replaced with less expensive adjuncts or not replaced at all. The senate this month is painstakingly ranking new and replacement faculty positions with the retirements that we already know about, fourteen requests for new and replacement faculty. We consider this one of the most important jobs that we do. Ours is a carefully controlled and well-timed process designed to ensure faculty members are replaced in the most critical areas. This SERP completely upends that process. We have heard time and again about the difficulty many departments have finding adjuncts. Medical imaging, nursing, computer science, biology, even geology. Who knew, we found out last week, these departments literally cannot find qualified candidates to teach during the day, who would be willing to work at a fraction of what they can make at their professional jobs. They cannot find the adjunct faculty. With the SERP, these departments will not be able to meet the demand for classes because they won't have instructors to teach them. And turning away students, how does that save us money? I cannot overstate how much damage the last SERP inflicted on our college. We lost more than one out of three managers and administrators, often replacing them with far less experienced outsiders. And I'm choosing my wording very carefully here, but I am gonna say what I'm gonna say. We have now had three EVPs in five years. The very public ouster of our last superintendent president, this is the only opportunity you're gonna hear for faculty to speak, so I really hope I'm allowed to talk. The very public ouster of our last superintendent president, and he was ousted, let's be clear on that, whom this board hired, was a low point in our college's history. If I chose to violate confidentiality, I could describe the difficulty your hired consultant has had recruiting applicants for the open superintendent president position. The revolving door of other administrators is obvious, and the chaos some have caused is something that we live with every day. I'm now in my twenty-ninth year at Santa Barbara City College, and faculty has never been so united in its lack of confidence in its administration. This is something I have worked very hard at great personal sacrifice to counter, and today I feel betrayed. At your meeting last month, you made the point that you've been asking the administration to resolve the structural deficit for years, and nothing's been done. Well, let me tell you, there's a lot of other things that haven't been done at Santa Barbara City College. Why is Dr. Benjamin having to push so hard for a revised mission statement before she leaves in December? The educational master plan, strategic directions. Why last week were you asked to approve a student equity plan the first time you ever laid eyes on it? The college-wide foundational planning that should be ongoing has largely collapsed. This is no one's person's fault, or all of our faults, actually. We in leadership positions spend most of our time in crisis. With our institutional culture in disarray, our trust extinguished, and our capacity for difficult decisions decimated, we swing from one high-profile debacle to the next. That is the instability wrought by your last SERP. Throughout all of this, the one stable factor has been faculty, and I will also add to this our longtime classified colleagues. But with our tenure and lifetime guarantee of secure employment, we have been the glue that has held this college together. So what are you proposed to do now? SERP out the most experienced, the most moderate faculty members you have, and disrupt the one remaining stable element at Santa Barbara City College. So we have three ways realistically that we can reduce the structural deficit at SBCC. We can SERP people out, we can lay people off, that's what's being presented publicly. We have one choice, one or the other. We SERP or we lay people off. So cut us against each other, why don't you, okay? Or we can produce, we can increase productivity and efficiency. We can also buy some time till February, when we finally see how the chancellor's office will fund the new students and it for Barnila. We don't know. We're working on opposition. Dr. Ralston last week held the first meeting of the Strategic Enrollment Management Committee, a vital effort that lay dormant after Paul Jarrell left the college at the end of his two-year tenure. This cross constituency committee will look at every aspect of how we attract, recruit, and retain our students. It's an effort that's long overdue at SBCC. Please give the college time to let that group do its work for improved productivity to develop in an organic college-wide consensus. You also have reserves, twenty-seven million, if I read the budget correctly, as of mid-September. You have stated repeatedly that you want to save that money when the college is in crisis, but if you don't see that we're in crisis right now, you just aren't looking clearly enough. Please don't look at the figures on a page and fail to appreciate the real cost-benefit analysis of this proposed SERP. Please acknowledge that you are trustees of Santa Barbara City College, and you hold in your trust more than the imperative to balance a budget by May the tenth. Please look at all the unintended consequences of your decision and act accordingly. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Lowes.
I'm Laris.
Larry.
I'm, I'm, I have two questions.
We will proceed with, I think that's the only three we have. Proceed with presentation on item four point one, but before we do that, I want to comment that consistent with what Cornelia told us. The board is being asked to, what we're being asked to approve today is subject to a collective bargaining with respect to represented employees. Because of the time urgency of the matter and to avoid the need to lay off employees, the board is being asked to adopt the resolution in item four point two today, without delay, with the understanding that it will be brought to the bargaining table as it concerns represented employees. So with that, we can proceed with our presentation.
Good afternoon, I'm Maureen Toll, Senior Vice President of PARAS, Public Agency Retirement Services. And we were asked by the district to do an analysis of the feasibility of offering an early retirement incentive, SERP as we call it, in this fiscal year. And just a little bit of background on PARAS. Uh, we were established in nineteen eighty-four, actually, we started doing SERPs back in nineteen eighty-four. The first community college district we did was that year. And that's one of our specialties, where, as the name implies, we focus on sort of niche retirement analysis and plans in the public sector. We have over a thousand clients, about eight hundred and fifty in California. We've done services for forty-four community colleges, and we've done analysis reports over four thousand times. So we have a tremendous amount of experience in this area. We're headquartered in Orange County, and we've had about three hundred and seventy-five thousand SERP participants over the years. And those are some of our community colleges. Just to note, Los Angeles Community College District was the largest community college district SERP that we did. We did that a couple of years ago, but we've done a number of everyone's. As well as a number of school districts all through this central area, coast area, Santa Barbara School District, you know, from Tascadero down to Ventura, really all through California, but quite a number of school districts and community colleges in this area. So the SERP process, as we've discussed, is to, for the board to approve opening several windows, and I'll go into the proposed timeline. One would be this fall for retirements by December thirty-first, and one would be in the spring for retirements by June thirtieth. Both of these windows are on a contingency basis, meaning that the board is green-lighting opening a window, but then after the window closes, PARAS would do a post-analysis based on the actual employees that are accepting the incentive to evaluate replacement costs analysis, you know, how they're going to replace. And then that would fine-tune the analysis. Right now, we're doing projections because we don't know, you know, obviously, exactly who's going to be taking. So, um, so in the, in December as well as again in April, after the close of the windows, then, uh, that it would go back to the board each time to evaluate whether it makes sense from a fiscal and operational objectives. So, um, so we would look, does it save money? Does it have operational impacts that are acceptable or problematic and its contingent? So, um, based on the results, the board can determine if the plan proceeds for that particular window or not. And if it proceeds, the employees would resign by December thirty-first or June thirtieth. If it doesn't proceed, then it would be canceled and the resignation letters would be revoked. But that's the concept of it, um, as we've discussed. Um, I've, actually, we've made some slight changes to this window dates, proposed dates. Um, on the handout that you have, the main change is that we proposed closing the second window in the spring, uh, March thirty-first rather than May first. And so there's, there's some information on that. So basically, what would happen is, uh, if the board approved opening the window, individual benefit illustrations would be sent out in a packet to each eligible employee. And then we would hold group orientations, they have one-on-one meetings through the window, and provide services to make sure that the employees understand what the offer is. Uh, and that would be repeated twice for the first and the second window. And, uh, so they would have to resign by December thirty-first or by June thirtieth. And then the supplemental benefit would begin February first and August first. And again, this would be a supplement to STIRS or PUR. So the decision is really, uh, you know, based on looking at their, uh, their STIRS and PURS benefits, what's being offered here, and making a decision. So we analyzed several different benefit levels, uh, but the one that we proposed based on looking at the analysis in terms of fiscal, projected fiscal savings is a seventy percent of final pay. That is the same benefit that was offered in the previous SERP. And it would be funded through a four-three-B incentive under four-three-B rules. Employer contributions are allowed for five years post-employment, so that's the funding vehicle. So, um, it allows for the district to fund it over five years, and it allows for various distribution options for the participants, including tax deferral, and, you know, various approaches that might fit their needs and help increase participation. So what we did, and I'll go here through the analysis in just a minute, but the basic analysis we did is we ran out ten years, what happens if you don't do an incentive? What kind of retirements are you going to get that's going to create savings? And then we superimposed, what happens if you do an incentive at this period of time? We compared the two. So what we're looking at is the compensation differential between the retiring employee and the replacement employee, determining if there's any savings there. Then we have to subtract out current natural attrition. In other words, those that would be going this year are a cost under our empirical model of looking at this. We're also looking at future loss of natural attrition as a cost as well. So you're basically accelerating your retirements to create savings, and so in future years, you're going to get less retirements than you would ordinarily. And that's the concept behind it, to accelerate retirement attrition, create savings through that. We also obviously have to look at any retirement costs that are accelerated because they're retiring early, uh, the cost of the incentive to benefit itself, and any savings from either temporarily or permanent in non-replacing the position. And so that's how we derive these, um, these savings or costs, depending on what we're looking at. So the assumptions we made, and I won't go into a lot of detail about this, but we assumed eligibility would be, uh, eligibility to, or qualification to retire under STIRS or PUR. And, uh, it's offered to full-time employees, uh, full-time faculty, sorry, education administrators, classified non-management, and classified managers. So the faculty would only be offered in the spring window, but the other groups would be offered with the fall window. And, um, so we looked at certain things like how much would it cost to replace adjunct replacement, for example, for the faculty, their active health benefits, retiree health benefits, and a variety of different assumptions. And we've done this so many times that it's been looked at by many, many colleges and others. And so it's a fairly vigorous empirical model for looking at. It's not the same as a cash flow or a budgetary model, but, but it is a model for evaluating whether it makes sense to do it. Um, and so, uh, the classified non-management, classified managers, that would be the PURS eligibility requirement, and they can, as I mentioned, leave either December thirty-first or June thirtieth. So, um, if you don't mind going to the handout, which is a summary of the, because I think you asked for a summary of the savings, um, and then I can go through that a little bit, and go through the, each of the groups. But on the handout, it shows what our projections are. So we're projecting that, um, about twenty percent total of the group eligible, based on the criteria I mentioned, would take. And by group, uh, there's two hundred and twenty that are eligible. So eighty-seven faculty, we're projecting twenty-one retirements, that would be twenty-four percent of that particular group. Uh, education administrators, that's a smaller group, we're projecting, um, one in December, one in June, about thirty-three percent. Classified non-management, hundred and twelve eligible, projecting eight in December and eleven in June. And, um, that's about seventeen percent, uh, take rate. Uh, classified management would be fifteen eligible, one in December, projected to retire, and two in June, so twenty percent. So in total, it's about twenty point four five. We try to be very conservative because you're determining whether you want to open a window. We'd rather be on the conservative side. We're looking at, um, the demographics, age and service, whether we think, we know that there was another incentive offered about, um, you know, four years ago. So that factors into our projected rates, we're taking that into consideration, and we're looking at all that data. So, um, the overall projected savings, uh, uh, is, is based on fifty percent roughly replacement for each group except for one. Uh, we're assuming for faculty, one-year adjunct replacement for, uh, for all the positions that would be retiring, and, and then full replacement after that. So full-time faculty for all those positions after one year. And, uh, so at, and then fifty percent of those would be replaced. So that's assuming ten point five not replaced, and creating in the first year, one point one in savings, and over five years, three point three million in savings. Uh, education administrators, we're projecting twenty-four thousand in the first year, and seventy, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand over five years. Classified non-management, hundred and twenty-three thousand. Uh, this is, I'm sorry, because this is based on the mid-year. So it's a half a year. Uh, so for the education administrators, it would be twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one. The, at the, for one year would be a hundred and sixty thousand, and then over five years, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand. Classified non-management, hundred and twenty-three thousand in the mid-year. Six hundred and seventeen, eighteen thousand, projected in over one year, and then two point seven million over five years. Classified management, confidential, that's a sixty-seven percent replacement because it's a small group. So it basically would be one non-replacement. So in the, at the mid-year, it would be eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five, and then seventy-six thousand over one year, and three hundred and thirty-six thousand over five years. So in total, it would be a hundred and fifty-eight thousand for the first window. So savings created in the second half of the fiscal year, and then projected savings for twenty twenty-one would be one point nine million in total, and seven point one million projected over five years. And just for a little bit more detail on the analysis we did for the faculty, we assume no mid-year savings because it wouldn't be offered mid-year. So starting fiscal year, starting July first, twenty twenty-one. So starting uh fiscal year, starting July first, twenty twenty-one, we looked at a hundred percent replacement. That's with one year of adjunct and then full, you know, full-time replacement beginning after the first year. That creates savings with everyone replaced. So uh and then w- we show on down the line to the fifty percent, ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty percent number of positions that uh um that wouldn't be replaced and then the projected savings over over that time. So you can see that the faculty group saves with full replacement. And then if there's some level of non-replacement, it saves one. And I won't go into a lot of detail about this, but this is uh basically this eligibility group, um the age. And so we look at this to determine projected uh participation as you know, as well as, you know, is this is this a group that might be uh ripe for doing incentive at this point in time? And by looking at this, w- uh we can see that there there's it is definitely a a group that there's an opportunity for. Not many times we'll say it doesn't seem like it works right now, this this group based on age. And then we look at age and service and this again helps us project. We're looking at fifteen years in particular because retirement eligibility, uh retiree healthcare eligibility is there. So it helps us with our projections and uh um so as I mentioned, eighty-seven faculty projected twenty-one um to participate uh at twenty-four percent. You know, we've done we've done in our community college districts, so we normally see anywhere from about twenty to thirty percent, but m- more along the lines of the low twenties take um when we offer incentive at this level. Again, i- it varies from district to district. So classified non-management, you can see there isn't the salary differentials. You're replacing at about, you know, eighty-five five percent of of salary. So for there to be savings, there needs to be some uh non-replacement occurring, either temporarily or permanently. And so we we looked at ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty and fifty percent replacement and uh looked at savings. So basically, at about two positions, it starts to create savings for for the district. And again, this is the eligibility group based on the age of classified non-management. So it was a hundred and twelve eligible and uh their average age is fifty-nine. And we looked at age and service to help make the projections as well, these types of demographics. So I this is a group that um that a a retirement incentive might work with, based on this information. So a hundred and twelve, eight in projected for December and eleven for June with nineteen total projected. And it's a seventeen percent uh participation rate. And this is what we find typically with classified non-management, that they go go at a lower rate of um participation than other groups. And then we looked at the education administrators, this is a smaller group. Um so we looked at a hundred fifty and zero percent. Um so uh you can see because of the replacement costs, they replace at about ninety percent uh uh in our assumptions. Uh so there's not, there's no savings created if if everyone is replaced. It would take uh non-replacement of one position for savings to be created by that group. And this is the group. So thirty-three percent, one December, one in June, two total. Thirty-three percent. These groups are a little harder to project than than larger groups, but. Classified management and confidential, uh again, they're uh because of their replacement is is differential is not there in terms of salary. Uh if you replace everyone, it 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 does not create savings. You need to do some non-replacement. So one position, sixty-seven percent replacement, uh create savings and of course on down the line. So we were looking at sixty-seven percent of our one thir- one position off being replaced. And this is that group as well. So this was uh eligibility uh under PURS. So fifteen total uh projected for the December date would be one and for June, two. So total three, twenty percent uh participation rate. So uh it just in before I, you know, get to questions, uh so uh PARs uh would would assist in terms of managing the enrollment windows. So doing the communications, getting the materials out, being uh available in group meetings and then on one-on-one meetings to assist the employees with uh getting any information that they need to make the decision. We have a call-in center in Orange County that literally just deals with um, you know, faculty, teachers, education, employees, cause most of them we do all day long, I have answering their questions so that they can get their needs met outside of us being on campus. And and so we'll provide, you know, the types of services that you need uh to 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 make sure that the employees get proper information and time to consider the incentive. So it um are there any questions that you have after looking through? I know there's a lot of numbers there that I threw out at you.
I should have a couple of questions. Um you mentioned uh the point in both windows, and I think these are two separate decisions, one for each window. Where we consider the fiscal impact of what has actually occurred, we need the board. And you said operational impacts. So my question is, um are those operational impacts um the impact on the college of the group that would be leaving beyond the fiscal numbers?
Yes, yeah, that's why operational is included, fiscal and operational. So once you know them, who's taking it, would you see the fiscal analysis, but you also need to do an operational analysis. If uh you know, if you can follow through on those assumptions, those replacement assumptions or non-replacement assumptions, and if there's some significant operational impact that um based on individuals who are going. But that would be something that for you to decide, we obviously will cat-evaluate, we'll do the fiscal analysis, but you you can evaluate that, you can ask us to look at, you know, um individuals that are leaving, what the replacement scenario would be for them, what their specific salary would be, you know, how long it would be before you replace that position. We can do very fine-tuned analysis, but the operational impacts is something that you would need to do and.
Right, so it's not strictly fiscal. It's a decision that could take into consideration the input of our shared governance groups as that decision approaches.
Yeah, and that is often times done, right.
Um and uh also, my question is on the, when you were looking at faculty and you were projecting twenty-one faculty would take this, and this is just a projection.
Mm-hmm.
Um does that number include what you might call the background number that would happen anyway without a SERP or plus?
Yes. So this, so the fiscal savings subtract out the natural attrition. And what we did is we got data from the last five years, what the attrition was for faculty. And we set a a natural attrition number. And so really, those savings are over and above the assumed natural attrition for that group. So I think it was it, and I have to look at my, I think it was about ten uh that goes. So really, the savings is created by the additional eleven only in our analysis model.
Okay, so Patricia mentioned fourteen retirements this year, that would be high.
Fourte- I'm sorry, fourteen requests for new and replacement positions were made to the Senate. And that includes multiple positions in three departments. So people people indicate to the E V, I can talk, I'm assuming. People, um faculty must submit a notice of retirement to the EVP by, I think, August thirty-first. That starts a process by which the departments with retirements or the departments that want new positions develop applications that they send to the academic senate. We he- we read the applications, we hear presentations and we write based on the list, a long list of criteria. But a total of fourteen requests were made to the senate this fall.
Okay, so that's helpful. How many retirements?
Almost all of them. Do you guys remember, was it one new faculty?
Oh, one, one.
One new, and I think the rest of them were.
There were basically so good for three years.
One year retirements, not necessarily all this year.
Oh, exactly. We, the senate allows um a department to consider a vacancy for two years. So if a person retired in a department last year, but that position wasn't filled, we allow that to carry over for one more year. So the fourteen figure actually could include over two years.
As a replacement.
As a replacement, exactly.
Okay, so just trying to figure out whether.
Yeah, we we don't have that information, but what we looked at is the last five years. We looked at the bump from the incentive year. And so, you know, and then we saw there was a a bit of a decrease after that from, but basically, we did it average out and you you might tweak that, you could have tweaked that assumption and say eleven, not ten. But we were just using our judgment based on looking looking at past attrition uh to to come up with uh that number. That number is key, is one of the key assumptions, is what your natural attrition is.
So you're. Right, so you're. But you're expecting then that the SERP incentive would perhaps take it from an average of ten, natural average, to twenty-one in this particular year, and then there would be fewer after that.
Exactly, and that's that's and that's reflected in the analysis as well.
As a reflection. Okay.
Yeah, you're trying to typically with an incentive, double the national natural attrition. If you're not getting much above natural attrition, then it's a cost to offer it. You know, so y- you need to typically get in that neighborhood.
Any other questions? Trusty Park.
Yes, and I think some of these are going to be for Dr. Benjamin, so I will I will be doing this.
Yeah.
Um so first of all, I know the the um administration has been surveying staff, um getting input on budget reductions. I know that there's also this committee that's been working on it. Um did the SERP come up in uh your surveying of staff as a possibility?
It did, it came up several times.
Okay. Um then uh another question I have is on the timing. And I think the reason that this is in a rush, and correct me if I'm wrong, is because um uh the district is interested in making an impact on its nineteen twenty budget and not just its twenty twenty-one budget. Um otherwise, this would come have come forward later. And actually, I um having been um part of uh uh the equivalent, the golden handshake at Santa Barbara Unified a number of times during my tenure there, um.
We did those, I think.
I um I always felt it was unethical for it to come late when there were already people that would have been putting in their retirements um and that that um that was a problem. Um so I, in some ways, I appreciate the timing, even with in terms of the discussion. Um so it's great to have a discussion earlier, wherever it goes. Um but for the timing, it was just for classified for nineteen twenty. And faculty, it's retiring for the twenty twenty-one school year, correct?
Yeah, faculty was the only group excluded from from.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then.
So one question I have, I know Liz Awkenkloss is not here today. Um and obviously, she would only be speaking, she's our classified um uh head of our classified unit. Um she would only be speaking in her personal capacity at at this point too, because would also need to go to classified. Um but was there any feedback from Liz or I'm I assume she was notified?
Yes, she was, and she, we had our college planning council meeting today where this was discussed. And she indicated in that that classified had expressed interest.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um and then I just want to say, uh I so appreciate the feedback from Patricia and Cornelia. Um I have to say, so twelve years Santa Barbara Unified, I think I was involved with three uh golden handshakes. And we never had um a bargaining unit come forward and essentially argue against the financial interests of their employees, of their staff. Um and so I am so impressed at putting the heart of the college first. Um and I, it's really helpful to hear um that it had such an impact. Uh the last SERP had such an an impact. Um I do strongly believe that it is, um even if it means that we can't move forward um to make an impact on the nineteen twenty budget, that that we would need to delay. And I mean, obviously, it's collective bargaining, you know. Um I think it's important um and necessary, obviously, to go through the collective bargaining process. So um I think eh eh in the next item, we talk about the resolution. Anything that we resolve would have to, it has to be made clear in the resolution that this is contingent on agreement with our employees. Um and so that's uh my my two cents at this point.
And I think it is, right?
Justy Boo, did you have a question?
Um I had a question, not a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
My question is, how were the replacement scenarios chosen? Why were these sw- figures? Was it just financial or is there something behind the fifty percent, sixty-seven percent?
Who was going to take that question?
Yeah, we we have looked at various options, but um I think the district had indicated that that fifty percent was was the most realistic in terms of what they were looking at doing in terms of replacement of those that accept the the incentive. But we gave a kind of almost a manual replacement options just to just to give a decision-making kind of document for for you.
It's the last whereas before the now there be resolved.
It's already in the.
Just Kate, yeah. Just Kate's point about the that.
In our reservation. That is contingent.
It it says and/or collective bargaining.
Well, I think some people who may be eligible are not represented by.
Because. Cause the classified is.
Yeah, well, we can talk about that when we get to the next item number then.
Yeah.
Would you accept a question from the audience, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um so I'm seeing this the first time today. And and I'm trying to make sense out of this, especially since this has been like moved forward in such a rush. So the question for you is, on this document here in the middle column, it says total projected savings in mid-year two thousand nineteen twenty, I assume this is June thirtieth, two thousand twenty? Mid-year two thousand nineteen twenty, is that correct?
Uh no, it's 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 for this current uh year, year, so if you have.
For this current year, for this academic year.
So so the savings would be created starting January first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth. So the second half of the fiscal year is what those savings are, and then the new fiscal year would be the second.
So just, you know, because of the rush and because the intent, I understand, to make a dent into the current year budget deficit. And the current year budget deficit is around three million plus something, right? The dent we are projecting is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and that is why we are in such a rush. Uh do we really think that it's worth this bending over backwards and having this done right away? Then instead of like waiting, think about it, discuss it, because of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred, I just would like to kind of verify this, this is only the only amount that we are saving.
Right, over and above your natural attrition, right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other.
That's not a budget number, that's the empirical analysis that we do in terms of savings, yeah.
But I I trust your numbers, so this would be about the whole part.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Any other uh questions from this table? Thank you very much for, oh, we got one.
One more.
Justy Elsie.
Yeah, just as we go along here. Um if um if we didn't implement it now and we didn't start it till whatever we like um in twenty twenty for the following year fiscal or our fiscal year.
You're talking about spring?
Yeah, if we didn't start it to, yeah, for the fall.
Spring window for. Yeah.
If we didn't start it till later, would that would that impact our second year numbers?
Uh yes, the second.
Of savings by uh by more than a hundred and fifty thousand?
Uh yes, um so if you just offered the spring window and not the fall window, your savings would begin um July first. And you would have, you know, potential, obviously, we 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 would project a little differently because you're not going to have the December window, so you might have more people go go out in the spring. So yeah, we would analyze that to determine what their their, what the savings would be for twenty twenty-one and going out, you know, the next ten years or such. There's actually usually a greater savings in year six because you finished paying off the incentive. But we typically don't like to go out past five years, even though we've analyzed it, cause you know, i- it's it's difficult to look past five years, you know, you know.
So it would be something less than the one point nine million that you show for projected savings in year one, in other words. Or would it be more?
It would be more. Yeah, I would have, we'd have to, I could, it would be. Yeah, I would have, we'd have to, I could, it would be very simple to look at those numbers for you. We could do it very quickly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Trusty Boo.
I, maybe the language on the sheet already answers my question, but when it says projected savings over three years. So the four point four million and the seven point one, those are aggregate savings, so.
Yes, yes, exactly.
It's not the annual savings, we'd be helping with our budget deficit.
Exactly.
So it's not like four million dollars of budget deficit, it's gone.
Yeah, it's accumulated.
It's, okay.
Yeah. And again, I mentioned this isn't cash flow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? I assume you'll stay with us in case we have a.
No, sure.
Further questions as we uh, deliberate. So. Does anybody want to make motion for? Resolution? Yes, Trusty Park?
Well, I'd like to talk about it, I think, in this case, a little bit more before I make a resolution.
Okay, sure.
Well, I, we can make the motion in a second and then discuss.
We can.
And then we could have a discussion.
Yeah.
So I think the motion should be contingent upon uh, collective bargaining.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, well then, um, for that, I would make a motion um, to pass uh, the resolution of the governing board number twenty, uh, number one, twenty nineteen twenty. With one amendment, and that is on the, on number one. Um, uh, just to, I know that it's in the whereas, but just to be really clear, that it says the governing board of trustees of the district hereby. Adopts the power supplementary retirement plan pending collective bargaining agreement as part of the district's retirement pro- program. Effective X date twenty nineteen and, just to make sure it's in the resolution itself and not just a whereas. Um, um, especially if the collective bargaining decides against it. Um, and this is a case where I, I um, I am mindful that this is essentially an employee decision at this point. Um, and um, that uh, I'm also really mindful that classified is not here. Um, to talk about this, um, and that it's classified that's affected uh, if, whether or not it goes quickly. Because it's the first, um, this fall date, and the reason we're doing it now is to benefit our classified employees. Um, and hence my motion as it stands.
I want to thank you for uh, for your comments. There's most enlightening and good discussion so far. I, I feel like um. Uh, the whereas pretty much covers it, but you, your um, introduction in the beginning was more information, which is fine. Maybe a little bit shorter and referring to the whereas to follow. Um, is another way to do it, either way is fine by me. I. As long as it's contingent on their approval, if they don't like it, then it, then it basically doesn't happen. Um, they seem to like it so far, but time will tell. So that's it. I, I'm kind of more concerned about um. The lack of immediate or, you know, significant impact, you know, on the budget immediately. But. We've got to pare things down, any way we can do it. That's less painful is better than doing it, that people, my view is being more painful, and nobody's gonna really like it. Because timeframes, everybody's timeframes are gonna be affected. Uh, so. To cause the least disruption and provide for proper processing, which I think we've done here. I um.
You second your motion?
I think I'm gonna second the motion to just approve it with that, with your recommendation. And if it could be done a little shorter or brief or fine, but I'm not against what you're suggesting.
Basically same condition, um.
Do we have discussion, Trusty Cronger?
Um, question uh, or clarification, the um, collective bargaining is obviously a condition of this. Um. If the collective bargaining results are different, and the classified, for example, decide that they would like to go ahead, that the faculty does not. Do we have the ability to offer a more limited SERP to a particular uh, employee group?
I have that same question. That's what we're going to ask.
We we have to see if it's gonna be beneficial, it may not.
Right, operational and fiscal, but is it possible, as we seem to have already done, to split the employee groups?
Right. Yes. I think anything's possible, but.
Yeah, it's up to you, how do you wanna do that? So you you can do that, and in my experience, that that happens sometimes. Several groups will do it, and some, some groups will not do it, so.
So you can proceed. Yeah.
You can proceed with some, but not others, depending on the response.
Yeah.
Which brings me back, if I would, to my thinking about. Um, if, if we have a lot of disruption. Um, in some departments or areas where replacement's difficult. Can we just eliminate that particular one temporarily or delay it, or do we have to cancel the offering to that whole employee group?
Well, we we'll have a goal that we need to reach in order to save money. And if we don't reach the goal, then we don't move forward.
Yeah. Yeah.
With the plan, that's how it works, cause it's not advantageous if you don't reach the goal.
I agree, yeah, and I, I was just exploring in my mind.
Yeah.
Based on um, by what faculty had, had stated. And um, which I highly respect the faculty, they've done a lot of good things in, in this college and um. I uh, they made us number one, not anybody else, it was the faculty. I, yeah, their cooperation. The biggest reason we're doing this is because we've got to come up with, we've got to get efficiency up. We've got to get this college, we've got to eliminate this ongoing recurring deficit. And we're not the only college in school in this situation with the declining enrollment. However, things will change, and then it'll get really difficult for a while before they get better again. And um, but we've got to address this now, or we're gonna have a big problem trying to get through the change. To in order to keep the college going and operating when, when enrollment starts to pick up again. Um, we won't have what we need to do that with, and it'll be very painful. Um, and in the past, over a few decades, I've witnessed, uh, you know, a lot of classes not being offered, things being cut back. And that limits opportunity, the district we serve. So, no matter what decision we make, I guess it's not perfect for everybody, but we need to maintain the college. And do our very best not to disrupt the good intents of our faculty and our staff. I don't see, the only, the only drawback I see to this at all is that some people are gonna be. At this time, there're gonna be a few people that are gonna be difficult to replace. But that's why we pay administrators, like our current president, um, the big bucks. Go find the people, make it happen. I don't know what else we can do. It, we, we've got to do all these little pieces in order to stem what's happening. And, you know, I'm not against spending, using the reserves, but we've gotta stop the ongoing, you know, bleeding. I don't, I'm not impressed with the hundred and fifty-eight thousand here projection for the first year. However, without that, we give up a chunk of the remaining, so. That's what I had to say, that's what's going through my mind. I, I, we've got to do everything we can to try to help this along and, and to get the situation changed.
Dr. Benjamin, you sought uh, input from. Uh, faculty and staff on suggestions for dealing with the budget, correct?
Yes, we had, a while ago, we did.
And, and how did, and SERP was mentioned.
Can I speak?
SERP was, SERP, pardon?
Can I speak to this?
Let let me finish my question, please. And SERP was, was mentioned by, by a number?
Yes, it was suggested. I, I think, yes, I'm sure it was, several times, yes. I sent the list out to the whole college, everybody, and now we have. Um, the, we've taken that, we were working the list through governance. I reported to you last week in the, the board meeting that I have a group uh, from college, our college planning council. How they've organized themselves, they've come, themselves, and they've come up with a great plan. But I have to share with you that today, and we were in that meeting, that's why we were like for this meeting, because we were in our governance meeting. Uh, they expressed serious concern about uh, the SERP. To them, and I can understand it, they feel that this kind of defeats their work, that they, that they've taken very, very seriously. They're not as encouraged in working through their plan to come up with this list that I was going to present to you in the November meeting. For your response, because they were going to attach numbers to all the recommendations. And so, um. They're a little deflated because of this particular thing. Uh, but I said to them that I think we need all of these. I don't know that the SERP will solve the problem. I don't think that one thing will, there are just a lot of things that we need to do in this regard, so.
Well, as it stands right now, Lindsay just walked out, but our percentage of salaries and benefits right now, it's beyond the eighty-seven.
It's ninety-one percent.
Yeah, so that's, that's the golden, that's it, it's ninety-one percent, that's not even, I never even imagined that that would ever. Back five years ago, we were concerned with eighty-five percent, eighty-seven percent. I mean, that was like our healthy, um, when the conversations around stirs and purrs. I mean, I felt like we spent years knowing that this was gonna happen, and the golden um, timeline was twenty twenty-one. I remember that, cause my daughter's gonna graduate from high school, and I'm like, gosh, at twenty twenty-one. But this all just kept creeping, creeping, and so ninety-one percent of our total budget is not sustainable.
It's salaries and benefits, yes.
Yeah, it's salaries and benefits. So that's like you mentioned at the, or somebody mentioned, that's the only place to go right now, so.
Trusty Boo, I have uh, some comments and some questions. The first is, um, how is the operational analysis impact gonna be done once we know uh, how many people look? What's, what's the process for that?
I, I couldn't tell you right now, cause I have no idea.
We, we don't have. Okay.
Well, you have to keep in mind too, the college is going through the whole guiding pathways, and I think everything we've been hearing about re-envisioning. I mean, so this just seems like, again, that whole thing where good things are gonna, you know, be moved around. So that better things can slowly get popped up with how we're re-envisioning that guiding pathways. Being mindful with public education, I guess, um.
I'm just, I'm not done with my questions.
I don't, the thing that bothers me about it is that people are upset about what we're doing.
Yeah.
And I didn't properly engage everybody, I just didn't feel that I had time to do that. Um, and we still have time to do that, I suppose, but it won't be the same.
Yeah, uh, I guess my similar question is, how's the collective bargaining negotiation gonna work out for this specifically? Is it gonna be part of the regular collect, I mean, I, we're already done with C S C A, so how is this gonna be?
We're done, yeah, this has to be special.
So special one done, okay, or why would be the timeline for that?
Immediate.
Im- immediate. Yeah, I mean, I, personally, I'm voting no, because I think our budget directive in the minutes, which I just checked. Was to work to close the deficit, but with no timeline, so I don't think, I think it's a false choice that it's like layoffs or SERP. Cause it's not, we have three million to use for our, from our reserves for this year. I think there's no rush in getting it done today, cause it's only a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. If we vote today, if we continue the conversation, we might still get the bigger savings, we might get a different result of what's being proposed. But I don't see the need to vote yes on this today, and there's been enough concern and heartache about this. That I don't, uh, I don't really feel strongly about voting yes, I'm gonna vote no.
Are you suggesting that it would be something we would then take up in a month or two months? Or what, what is your concept of, when you say not doing it today?
Well, I think we could talk about, I think this conversation should still happen on campus with the representative groups on this matter. And then whenever the, okay, let's, today's October fifteenth, and this would open October twenty-second. So we really have until like, January to make a decision if we wanna do this. I think it's worth waiting till January, or even December or so- something, not today. Just cause people haven't had a chance to really talk about it, and there's not a really great benefit from doing it today. Hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, again, our reserve's twenty-seven million, that's our, of our budget, that's like one pers- less than one percent of our budget, so.
If we wait till January though, we've, we've given up the whole hundred and fifty-eight, right?
Uh, either have given it up, or it rolls into the next one, either way, it's pennies compared to.
Yeah, yeah. But it's not, it's not savings we will achieve in this fiscal year.
Yeah, which I think we don't need to achieve any savings this fiscal year. We have three million dollars in our budget already allocated to cover the deficit. We have twenty-seven million reserve. We already made the decision as a board to approve our budget with the deficit. And so I don't need, see the need to have to reduce the deficit so immediately this fiscal year without quick action. I just think we can wait a little longer, make a better decision later. Maybe have savings slightly different, slightly more, she said slightly more, if we took it out of this year. There's just no need, I mean, I'll pay a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars to be able to have a better decision at the end of the day, out of our twenty-seven million dollar reserve.
I thought you were gonna say out of your own pocket, I was like, second to that.
I might add, I might add that, let's write it, but no.
Yeah, wait for your check.
Um.
Trusty Cronger.
I, I appreciate uh, the concerns that have been expressed um, by Cornelia and by Patricia. Um, they are obviously serious and passionate concerns. Um, but I'm looking to the question of whether or not we can. Accommodate the need for these discussions as we move forward. I mean, as Kate has pointed out, um, we don't have our classified group here, they are the ones that are in that first contention. Um, they too need the opportunity to decide whether they like it or don't like it. And so voting no takes that away from them. Um, that removes the option for them who may or may not like it, I don't know the answer to that. But I'm wondering if Helen, you feel that we can um, develop that process of, of assessing operational impact. Assessing, uh, going through the collective bargaining for each group. During the time that we're moving toward a decision as a board to do it or not do it.
Simultaneously?
Simultaneously, yeah, concurrently, can we, I mean, if we're looking.
Well, the operational, you, you can't assess the operational impact, especially on the faculty side, until you know what positions.
No, no, I'm, we have two decisions, one, the first one is the classified window.
The window one, you mean?
Window one.
Uh-huh.
And so we are going to want to assess fiscal and operational impacts on that group.
Mm-hmm.
Before deciding whether to go forward. And that is, I don't know when, let's see, if the board decides.
December eleventh.
December eleventh, okay, so between now and December eleventh, that's focus one. Focus two is that we are doing collective bargaining for all groups concurrently.
Mm-hmm.
Whether or not this goes forward. And um. That includes the whole faculty component that would be the following year.
For the sperm.
So, I'm just wondering if we have enough time to put together that kind of discussion. That, I mean, what really I hear fundamentally is people want a chance to get together, talk about it, think it through, discuss it. And as well, the operational impact depends on who elects.
Mm-hmm.
Really critically depends on who elects, until we know that, we're shooting in the dark at certain point.
Right.
Yeah, you may not get enough.
That's a, that's a really great point. So, is the idea then that classified would need to move quickly to decide whether or not they wanted to participate in window one? Um, but, uh, and this is, I think, a question for you. Um, but if certificate, uh, if faculty needed more time. Um, what would be the deadline for them to make their decision before we decided whether or not window two went forward?
Right, based on this uh, proposed timeline, and it can be adjusted, but. Uh, the window would open February twelfth and close by March thirty-first. Um, and so with the window opening uh, decision, and it could be pushed back a little bit to March or so. But um, you'd, you'd probably, you know, wanna, wanna have made the decision by sometime by the end of February. And, and, and then open the window once the decision's made, plan for that. I know they, that the, the year ends March, uh, May ninth, so you have to make sure you fit it into that, give them time. Give time for the board to decide before they go, you know, end the academic year.
So, essentially faculty have a few months before they would need to get back to us to say whether or not they agree to this. And whether or not window two is going to open for faculty.
Right.
So there's time for that conversation to happen, okay?
And the communications would be based, you know, at the beginning of the window on whoever it's being offered to, the eligibility group, all that can be changed. Optimizing the second window, there are changes like that that could, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Trusty Elsie.
Yeah, that was a encouraging uh, point. I, I mean, I feel like voting yes, because there is time to discuss all this. And the board did give. And the board did give the president, our president. The the intent, communicate the intent to act um quickly, as quickly as possible to achieve. The maximum possible results and there is no one way, one one single action. In s- to achieve that impact on the budget, so a whole, we've been doing a whole lot of things. And I don't see, since faculty has well plenty of time to accept or reject. Or to give us input, it requires our final approval to uh approval to succeed. I don't see a reason of this, other than like emotions or showing concern to others. Beyond the wherethes um as a reason not to proceed. I think um proceeding is only acting in the best interest of the district that we serve. And um. I have a little faith in our in our in um in our faculty and the leaders of this college. And um our administration, especially our current acting president. To uh set this up in a proper way and not uh not to do anything that's improper. So I would vote yes at this point, just to share my opinion and um. I love it when everybody else asks questions, I can think more stuff, maybe I missed something.
Kate, could you restate your proposed amendment?
It was under item one, uh now therefore be it resolved that one, the governing board of trustees of the district hereby adopts the PAR'S supplementary retirement float plan. Um what did I say?
Yeah.
Pending uh collective bargaining agreement.
Or subject to.
Subject to maybe?
Subject to.
Collective bargaining group with each, how about with each bargaining unit, just to make sure that we're separating them all out in terms of decision making?
That's a great amendment.
Don't you love the two lawyers? Yeah, words, I think.
Are you, you like that?
Oh, no, it's just, I just love that, that's always a good.
Did you get that, Robert?
Say it again.
So it was her.
For each bargaining unit.
Uh selected to the, yeah, to the collective bargaining agreement.
Which bargaining.
So one more question I have then, as I understand it, I don't wanna make this, get this clear in my head. We could, we could elect to proceed even even without. Um even if we needed to omit one of the groups, if it finally, if it worked out this way. Okay, if we if we have that kind of flexibility, I see no reason to uh to delay considering what our mission and goal is.
That includes a financial as well as operational analysis.
Yes. And those are in the wherethes, so.
Yep.
So I don't, I don't, I'm not an attorney, but it doesn't look like we're violating anything.
Can I ask one one question, just one final question? If if faculty has until March, what is it, thirtieth to declare whether they will retire, is that correct? Under the amended, March thirty first, thirty first, so between March thirty first and the end of the semester. Our new president will conduct an operational investigation into whether this is feasible. And after March thirty first, that's when you guys will make your final decision?
April ninth is on, is the schedule.
So you've got between March thirtieth and April ninth to do an operational investigation on the impact of faculty. And whether it will be in operation detriment.
That that's just a proposed date, you can um you can, you know, be further back, delay it in April. Um this is just a proposed timeline right now, um but A- April ninth is is not set in stone.
So could it be the end of April or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Or even into May, as long as we're ahead of.
It's a very. It's a very short window.
Yeah, yeah, typically before they go out, you know, af- maybe after, after May ninth would not be good to to do that, yeah.
Well, there's. Thank you.
By the motion, if the motion passes, are we accepting this schedule?
No.
No, I think it's just.
The board, no.
It's not part of it, it's just a resolution.
So so that can be, we we don't have to amend the motion to deal with that.
Well, that's like the weeds thing, what are we gonna do?
Yeah.
Well, uh my comment on that would be, we have, that may be the window to to do the actual analysis and make a decision. But the exact process by which that is done, we have a good deal of time for administration to come up with that process. So that it won't be like trying to invent the process and do it in a matter of days, it will be plugging the numbers in. Um I don't see a problem, I also uh because we have speakers here that are present, I also. Don't uh, I I appreciate the concern, but I really don't. There's, everybody wins with this, except if it causes institutional disruption. Some employees will win, it's a to their advantage if they choose, if they choose it, some will choose not to. Um and nobody's being forced to do this. So the only, the only drawbacks that I really see here that can happen is it's going to affect, depending on who elects to take it. Um it could, it could affect the op- the the ability of the college to produce its product. And meet its goals and if that's, if that's a disruption, then we've allowed for that to be evaluated in this, it looks like. So um with that being said, I. I know it would have been really nice if we were just thinking about doing this a year from now and pass it on through. We probably should have looked at this agai- six months ago and it would then less painful for everybody and it wouldn't be like a surprise. But it actually, I I just thought I I'd just make those points public. And and let everybody know that we're we're not, we're not like deaf to the people that came and spoke to us.
Before we, trustee Croninger.
Well, I was just gonna say, I'm envisioning there's two windows here, the one that we were just talking about with Patricia, where we know who's elected and we look at. Specific people and operational impacts, but there's also the collective bargaining window, which I would understand to be if this were adopted. From today through till middle or end of February. Where that discussion occurs in time for being in front of an enrollment packet. Um for each of the groups, basically.
That's right.
Um so that's the general discussion about what does it mean for the institution in a general way? And then there's a second specific discussion, as I understand it, so I'm just.
So we, before we get to a vote, this trustee, Meschey, have any words of wisdom for us?
Uh no, I don't, because I'm not supposed to engage in employee bargaining processes.
Spray out, spray out.
He's learning.
I am, I'm very concerned about how this would affect student success. In that um full-time faculty might not get replaced early and we're not sure about the quality of adjunct faculty who might get to replace. The very experienced full-time faculty that might get to take this, so. I'm very worried about student, how does my first student success and also knowing that we're working on the stu- student success and that formula. So I'm very concerned about that, um apart from that, I think also the fact that this didn't go to the groups. Or discussion also, I think that is a a very huge concern for me and. I would personally vote no on this, out of respect for those groups that didn't get the series early and. Didn't have this discussion prior to this time, so I would vote no.
Thank you.
Do you need me to officially change the motion to include Marshall's language, or is it okay just to move forward through unanimous?
If you wanna restate it, just for.
If you could restate it.
Say it, okay, I will restate the emotion um to include in line number one, now therefore be it resolved. That the governing board of trustees of the district hereby adopts the PAR'S supplementary retirement plan. Subject to the collective bargaining agreement of all district bargaining units. As part of the district retirement program effective whatever today is, October fifteenth.
Yeah, I think they said each bargaining unit, just.
Of of each bargaining unit?
Yes.
Sorry, that's a better way of putting it.
Okay.
Each bargaining unit.
Sounds good.
I I I agree.
Still second, okay.
Second.
So I'm gonna ask all those favorites.
Okay, it's a roll call.
Yeah.
It's a roll call.
But I'm not gonna.
We haven't done one in a while.
Okay, well then uh do you call it out?
Yeah, I do, you should.
Okay.
Okay, trustee of, oh, excuse me, uh student trustee Edg.
No.
Trustee of.
No.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Croninger.
Yes.
Trustee Geyer.
Yes.
Trustee Nielsen?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Okay, we may be done. Not doing this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. It'll be on the next, I'm in November, ten, eleven.
Do we have a uh motion to adjourn?
So we're skipping item four point three?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. So moved.
Maybe just before we do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um it's not an agenda, but it's it's certainly part of our discussion we just had and I would say that maybe by. General consensus, we could encourage the idea of a robust discussion with our our folks about this, sir. Does anybody disagree? I think everybody here wants that, it's not.
What what do you mean?
A robust discussion in in both in the collective bargaining sense and in the collective, in the sense of when we know who it is who is stepping up. Um I think that that both of those are really important discussions, so I would just say, has a sense of the board's views on that.
Right, that's a good idea, you said, I think, once you hand out the actual like en- enrollment, you're gonna make an informed decision and you're gonna know what you're saying, so it's like. I think for the employee group, I mean, I know if someone was offering this to me and it's one thing to hear it here, but then if you're looking at, oh, for my future, this is what I'm thinking. It's a different conversation when someone has it in their hand and they can make decisions for their well-being and their family and their future, so I think that that's good.
Right, there's the institutional discussion, there's the individual discussion, there's a collective bargaining discussion, there's a lot of discussion here.
At Santa Barbara State College.
Yes.
Do you have a comment?
I have a kind of a request of the administration, if um. If somebody could round up a history of uh the percentages, like we're at ninety one percent. Where the ideal percentage is, why why those numbers were chosen, why the views on what percentage of our overhead should be. You know, is okay for uh faculty and staff versus other things. And where we're at now in relation to the norm and how the norm was established and some history. We could point to what happened at San Francisco, City College and other campuses that have gotten out of whack with the with the percentages. But I think a general, a release of a compendium of uh of uh history historical cases and reasoning for how things are done. And I don't propose that our administration should be responsible for writing that, but I think they could. Without too terribly much trouble, with a little help, um come up with a collection of information that we could make locally available, even on our website. Um that everybody could access and I think it would, I think the more information we share. And about the reasoning and the history and why we're doing it or what the goals are, reasons for the goals being set the way they are. I think um only adds to increase the spirit of cooperation to solve problem. And mostly right now, we're looking at solving problems before they become acute, that's the reason. Um and why we see it that way, I think a little history is a really good, is a really good thing, just to share. Because uh you know, people know this stuff, but it they don't, it's not. It's not current, it's not what's in their head right now, so I think just putting the information out there, talking about it, it's like. My background's in marketing, so if I wanna sell something to somebody, the example of how I would do that is basically found in a twenty second TV commercial. You say the same thing seven times, maybe in different words, but you repeat, bring it out, put it in the open, let people address it and look at what what we're doing. And I think a lot of what this college has done to get where we're going has done, has done it because it's produced some really good results. Um and so there's good valid reasons for how it how it's getting where it's going, but we've also gotta do what's sustainable. And and so a really good, give, putting the information out there is only gonna generate better discussion, I feel like. Is that an unreasonable request, Doctor Benjamin?
I will help you dig up some of the thick mac documents we got, because I do think we have that, weren't we?
Yeah.
We'll do a little.
We already have this stuff, I don't, you need a.
We'll do a book club and then we'll come to you, yeah, you and I will do a book club and then we'll come to you.
We'll do a book, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, but don't wanna give you more work, I just, we just.
Oh, yeah, you do.
Okay, yeah, I guess I do.
You do, correct.
So I, that's tracked, did we have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you for everything. Yeah, motion second.
Okay, all of favor?
Aye.
Aye.